Call to order for the Watertown City Council meeting for June 3 of 2024. Just real quick, if anyone is out there wondering, we're having a little problem with our internet, but this is going to be recorded and put on Facebook Live. So if you're...
It's just GovTV.
Okay, just GovTV is not working, so don't worry or just switch how you choose to watch us. So please rise while Councilman Shuddy leads us in prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you. Thank you for this day that you have blessed us with. And specifically tonight, Lord, I just want to lift up, as tonight here, we have our fire chief, we have our police chief, Lord, both are here, and their leadership over the years. And we just want to thank you, Lord, for what you've put in them and the abilities you've given them to keep our city safe, Lord. And so we just pray your blessings over them, over their families, over their entire, all their colleagues, Lord, that they oversee, and all who partake in keeping our city safe. We just thank you, Lord, for those you have, that are serving this community in that capacity. Give us wisdom tonight as well as we work through the, oh, the decisions to be made this evening and to lead the city in the right direction. And so we praise you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Finance Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll.
Okay. Holene?
Here.
Jurens?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Shuddy?
Here.
Tupper?
Here.
Beeler?
Councilman Beeler is gone today?
Absent. Okay. Danforth?
Here.
Thank you.
We are going to amend the agenda before I call for a motion. We are going to be removing item 8A and 9D. Those two items will be struck from the agenda. With that, may I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Motion made by Councilman Jurens, seconded by Councilman Peters. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting tonight's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We're going to go straight into item 9A, an Authorization of Professional Services Agreement, Amendment Number One with Tegra Group Incorporated for Owners Representative Services Related to the Wastewater Treatment Facility Improvements, Project 2317, in the amount of $607,000. City Manager, are we going to you or our Public Works Director? Director Von I?
Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Bear with me, please, on my stuffy congestion cold that I'm healing from here. So it was a tough fight all last week, one of those man cold conditions that I had, so. But I am on the mend. Anyway, so the item before you hear, item A, of course, is an amendment with Tegra. Tegra is our owner's representative that we've used on a number of different projects in the community, the Wellness Center, the ICE Arena, to name the two most recent. We've been also recently working with them through the design phase of the wastewater treatment facility improvements. Of course, that's a very high-dollar capital improvement project for the city. In totality, it's one of the highest, it is the highest capital improvement that the city's ever invested in, to the tune of sixty, just shy of $62 million in total expenses. Of course, that funding has been a result of some ARPA grants from a couple of years ago and some SRF loans from the state, like we typically do with our wastewater improvement projects. We pulled Tegra in during the design phase with our CMAR project delivery method. We have a construction manager at risk, who is Rice Lake, and our design professionals, who is HDR Engineering. And Tegra's role through the design phase, like what is being proposed through the construction phase now here tonight, is simply being the owner's representative. They, what I would view and summarize, oftentimes, like one of the owners of Tegra summarizes themselves as an extension of the city's staff. And I can tell you that while there is a hefty price tag associated with these services, I can also assure you that throughout the construction phase of the ICE Arena, Tegra more than helped make up the cost of their service fee by the in-depth level of tracking the project progress, the project pay applications, how the subcontracts are set up with the CMAR, and just make sure that all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed to a level of detail that we simply are not staffed in-house to perform. And with that being said, this addendum would carry Tegra on with us through the construction phase, which I'd like to remind, the council is projected to last through 2027. It's a multi-year project, given the scope of work that has to be completed. And so staff brings this with a positive recommendation for approval to carry us through construction phase with Tegra services. We do have a couple of representatives from Tegra here with us tonight. I'm sure they'd be glad to speak to any questions that the council might have, and I'll stand by to help out with those as well.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agreement. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Open it up for discussion, conversation, and as I said, and as Heath did say, we had people out in the audience. Did you guys want to say anything?
Love to have another project.
Fair enough. Any comments, questions, council? All right. It's a big enough budget item. I want to do a roll call vote. Officer Bob Zine, please call it.
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Danforth? Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9B, an approval of Amendment Number Three with Rice Lake Construction Manager at Risk for the Wastewater Collection System and Treatment Facilities Improvements in the amount of $28 million roughly, and Authorization for Rice Lake to proceed with construction services for a guaranteed maximum price of $48,633,000. Director Von I?
Thank you again, Mayor. Manager Mack, this item, of course, is the other half of the discussion I just had regarding the construction manager at risk, an amendment to establish that guaranteed maximum price for their contract. If you recall, we did a bid award for some early procurement, long-lead-time items here a couple of meetings ago. What this does is this is the formal step in the CMAR process that gives the owner, the city, a guaranteed maximum price for them to deliver the construction costs to us. And that cost, of course, would be set as outlined in the title summary there at $48,633,277. With that, I'll stand by for any que-- we do have, the owner of Rice Lake is here with us this evening as well, and we can stand by for any questions from either him or Tegra reps or city staff.
Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the amendment and authorize the construction services. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Danforth. Any discussion, council? Questions? Thank you very much. Yeah. And this has, just for everyone, anyone watching, if this is the first time you've tuned in to hear anything about the wastewater project or some of the other work that we're doing in regard to this, this is a big budget item, but this has had multiple hearings preceding this in council and at-work sessions. This is not the first go-around for this. We've had long, in-depth conversations. We don't get to an amount this large easily, but we have gone through the numbers, and it's all justified and very good for Watertown. Director Von I, you have anything to add?
If I could, I was remiss on, because it's one of the last times to bring a number of this magnitude forward to the council for this specific project, I did want to give some quick credit to the team in the room. Most of the room's made up of that entire team. City Engineer Peterson, we have our new wastewater superintendent, Dari, project manager, Marcy Luna, she's the one doing the specific project management details on this. And then, of course, our Rice Lake and Tegra representatives. And then dozens of people outside this room that have poured into the completion of the design and getting things to where they're at with this magnitude of a project has been a great process and one that we continue to look forward to work together through as a team all the way through 2027.
All right. Thank you. Council, last chance. Hearing none, Officer Bob Zine, please call the roll. If you're in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay.
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9C is an approval of a change order, number one, for the 2024 Solid Waste Pavement Rehabilitation Project with Dunick Incorporated for an increase of $156,000 for a new contract price of $424,000 roughly. Director Von I?
Yes, thank you. This, excuse me, we talked about, if I recall, I was in a work session or a previous council meeting, how we had a certain amount of cost savings from other capital expenses here in 2024 that we thought we would put towards other known needs at the landfill. So we went out for bid on paving some of the area around the scale and the main shop or the administrative building that's out there. When those bids came in, very favorable, the logical thing we thought to do was expand the paving limits that would still prove to serve the landfill well and as an extension of the necessity for that pavement. And that's what this is, is a change order to formalize that with that contract with Dunick and brings us up to the, about the total project costs that we had discussed previously. I'll stand by for any questions, along with City Engineer Peterson.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the change order. Motion made by Councilman Tupper, seconded by Councilman Peters. Councilman Tupper?
Director Von I, one question I do have, this is just an extension of the work that they're doing already, right, that we approved already?
That's correct.
So I noticed we have a $20,000 charge for mobilization on the first part and an additional $10,000. Why would we pay mobilization twice?
If I could refer to City Engineer Peterson, he can probably expand.
Sorry, I didn't get that question to you before to--
No problem at all.
Justin Peterson, City Engineer. Thank you, council, for the question. The mobilization is essentially the, includes the bonding and the insurance and the other stuff. And so when the project expanded, it expanded, the mobilization expanded with it.
So they were required to up their bonding insurance for the project?
Yes.
That we basically paid for it. Thank you.
Councilman Danforth?
I hate to question that, but that, the numbers don't add up. Mr. Tupper, I appreciate you bringing that up because that, it's something that I had looked at and I just forgot to bring up as well, but I appreciate that. The $20,000 was for a $300 and some thousand dollar project, and then it went up 50% with a 25 or 30% increase. It seems really odd. It seems like a catch-all, to be honest with you, every time we get one of these bids in. And so it does seem very odd to me, and I wonder if that's really the case here.
Any further, Councilman Jurens?
What are the rating factors normally on a bond like this?
Is this a performance bond? Is this a?
Yes, that's correct. And so the average dollar amounts on a cost per thousand, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but when it comes to mobilization, I think Engineer Peterson summed up pretty well that those numbers are the numbers. There are contractors that put anything under the sun they want to into mobilization, and it's just a number we get. And when we take what that number is, it, there's not a specific breakdown or spelling out of exactly what has to be or can and cannot be in that number. And certain contractors will use that value differently on any given project because mobilization is always a line item on most any project, most any civil engineering project, anyway. So I think that the brunt of what they're doing is exactly what Engineer Peterson described it to be, but it could be additional costs or absorbing from other areas that we're just not aware of the specifics of.
Councilman Danforth?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Von I, when we go out and we request that, can we define what can be included within a mobilization charge versus, let's just say mobilization, we define what can go into there? Anything outside of that, you put it in as a contingency, like we do on a lot of projects, where we have contingency funding, where they have to justify anything that they do. It just seems like it's, it's like an old habit that is hard to break. It just happens, and we accept it. And we may not be able to do much about it, but we do need to understand it. And to allow this big catch-all that we don't understand what all goes into that seems, it seems unnecessary. And it seems like, and I'll speak for myself, it seems like for me just to blanket approve those things without understanding that number, it seems irresponsible from the taxpayers' standpoint. So, I mean, is it, can a person, when we go out for bids, can we say, you can, mobilization consists of this, this, and this? And beyond that, put it in a justifiable contingency?
Yeah, I'll answer your question and then maybe refer to Engineer Peterson for any additional comment. But so what you're referring to, Councilman Danforth, is what I refer to as a, contractually on a bid, a more in-depth setup than what City Watertown currently has. Previous city I worked in, for example, for every bid item, they had a basis of payment and a method of measurement, both those two components for every bid item. So you knew what mobilization included because of the basis of payment. Your payment is based on this language and these technical specifications of the contract, based on each bid item. That'd be the same for curb and gutter, asphalt, gravel base cores, subgrade prep, all your bid items had those two components spelled out clearly. We're simply not that advanced to where we've got that much detail in our bid specifications. However, we do rely on the South Dakota DOT bid specifications, where they do have some of those details spelled out. And I'm just simply not aware, and I don't know if Justin is off the top of his head, of whether they would have that for this bid item, that basis of payment and method of measurement component or not. But that's exactly in line with what you're talking about, and it is definitely something that's possible. It is a very expansive undertaking to get that done for all of our bid items. But to start with, maybe the mobilization would be a good one to tackle initially for future projects.
Follow-up?
Well, first of all, I want to make it clear that what we're seeing and my concerns here aren't new. Since I've ever been on the council on any of the projects, they've always been that way. So this isn't that we're doing something different today, but it's always been, I hate to call it a thorn in my side, but it just is kind of one of those things that I want to know what I'm spending my money on and not just a catch-all. So I want to preface that, Mr. Justin, or Mr. Peterson and Heath, so this isn't pointing fingers, this is just the issue. So Heath, did you find value in that methodology that you referred to?
Oh, absolutely. It was, it adds a lot of clarity to what the contractor's supposed to provide for that bid item, and then how we measure that work in order to pay them for that work. It definitely adds clarity to the process.
You don't know what's involved in that, but, you know, at least from sitting on this side of the desk and just looking at numbers and not really understanding the project, that certainly would help from, I think, from a councilperson's standpoint. So anyway, I think that's maybe a moving target, but something that we should maybe work towards, it would seem like.
Any further questions or comments, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the change order. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Item 9E is an approval of a court award, quote, award, to multiple vendors for the information technology, audio and video, and data cabling and networking packages for the Wells Fargo renovation in addition to City Hall, Project 2035, in the total amount of $330,000 roughly. So we will go to City Manager Mack. You kick it off, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have in front of you are quotes, not bids, just a little information. IT items are not required to be bid by state law, but we do, based on our own procurement policies, go out for different, for quotes, for different items. And what you have in front of you are multiple quotes for different IT components within the remodel and the new addition for the City Hall project. I'll let our IT director speak details to you, if you'd like, on those different things. We did have a budget of $400,000, so it did come in a little bit under that, which we're glad for. And I will stand by for any questions. One last point, I guess, we will be bringing, as soon as it's finalized, an additional quote, quotes and/or bids on the FFNE interior signage and geotech testing. And that will be the remainder that needs to be awarded for this project.
Director Boyle?
Yeah. Manager Mack explained it pretty well. We've got all of our IT tech needs for the project listed here. Everything from all of our AV equipment to data cabling, networking needs that we have, teleconferencing, et cetera. So if there's any questions, I can field those.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the, approve the quote awards. Motion made by Councilman Peters, seconded by Councilman Shuddy. Any conversation on this, council? Councilman Danforth?
Pete, does this include the changeover from CAT 5 to CAT 6, all that type of stuff? Or is that a separate?
No, this is included in CAT 6. Category 6 cabling is the standard for any new, any new building projects, and that's what the quote is for.
That's included in all this to get--
Correct.
Located to all the positions and--
Yep, yep. We worked with Swiftell, and we're going to be, we've worked with them in the past for this, and they're going to be running all of our cable, all our data cables to the spots that we have picked out.
Okay, thank you.
Any further conversation, council? Hearing none, the motion is to approve the quote award. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed, nay. Officer Bob Zine?
Okay. Holene?
Aye.
Jurens?
Aye.
Peters?
Aye.
Shuddy?
Aye.
Tupper?
Aye.
Danforth?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I neglected to do open forum at the beginning of the meeting. I will do so now. Is anyone here to address the council on something not on tonight's agenda? I'll close open forum. We go to ordinance, we'll go straight up to other business. Councilman Tupper, you want to plug fireworks?
Well, of course, I always do. So, you know, I like those big bangs and all those bright lights. And we'll be bringing the 4th of July fireworks display back to Anza Soccer Field again this year, open to the public. And we'll be out knocking on doors, getting donations. Our budget this year is $40,000, like it was last year, and I do believe if not the biggest in the state of South Dakota, it's darn close to it. So I think at one time, it might even have been one of the bigger displays in the country. So, and people from those fireworks do a great job. They always want to surprise me a little bit toward the end and do something. And our city, City Manager Mack's going to sing the National Anthem for me, whether she likes it or not. She said yes once, so I take that as a yes. We won't have you sing it tonight, Heath, because your voice ain't there. But so, you know, we couldn't do it without the help of the community, and I'll be, I've already started, and I'll be knocking on a lot of doors and bringing a lot of bills for Kristen to send out, and her staff. Couldn't do it without their department also, and there's just, there's hardly a city department I don't touch when I, when I do this program, and I couldn't do it without all their help. So just want to thank them and thank the community and look forward to the 4th of July.
Thank you very much. Any other, other business? Any announcements from council members or introduction of topics? City Manager report?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one item. We've been discussing, I've shared it in a few updates. The state passed a bill that allocated $10 million in grant funding for-- allocated $10 million in grant funding for airport terminal projects. We will be submitting an application to assist with the cost of the FAA equipment relocation project. You may recall our discussion about that during the budget process. It's a 60-40 split, but I wanted to make you aware that applications are due Monday, so our consultants are working on that, and that goes to the Aeronautical Commission. It's a state grant. There's no federal dollars tied with that, and just to give you a heads up that that was happening. Also, I'll pull up my calendar here, I think it's tomorrow, there is a ribbon cutting at 3:30 for the new playground equipment at the Lions Park. So if you're able to join, that'll be a great thing to celebrate, should be beautiful weather, and I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. We have no need to go into executive session. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Councilman Shuddy, seconded by Councilman Tupper. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Good night, and God bless you, Watertown.